Certainly, we can call it order. And, and you know, I, as I said, I don't think, I'm not, I wouldn't be surprised if Ken doesn't, isn't able to arrive at the meeting. So we have the four of us on the committee, and we certainly have a quorum if we for any reason need it. And I briefly looked at the minutes from our last meeting. They look, they looked right and correct to me in terms of how I remembered things. I don't know if you guys have, but.
Yes, I have.
Yeah, I do.
So someone want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to.
Unless there's discussion, I mean, obviously unless there's discussion.
No.
Okay. So can I have someone move to approve the minutes?
I've, I've moved to approve the minutes.
I second it.
I'll second.
All right. Well, we got, with four of us, we're all gonna have to take turns here, I think. All right. So all in favor of approving the minutes indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
And all opposed? Okay, I don't hear anybody. So the minutes are approved. Then our, our next order of business would be the director's report, but we can, we can skip that at the moment. And we'll come back to it afterwards before we get into all business, hopefully. But any news from the friends?
The only, we didn't have a meeting yesterday. So I think, I think Peg wants to do it next Wednesday. So I don't have anything new, new, except that Pam Rusko and Sharon and Barbara Josephson and a couple of other people went and picked up the poinsettias today and called people to pick them up, to let them know that they were there when they were going to be there to pick them up. I got a special delivery of mine. So those are, so those are going to be finished by Saturday. So that fundraising piece will be, will be done by Saturday. Other than that, I don't know that we, again, we haven't had a meeting. So I don't know, you know, anything about the annual appeal or any of that yet.
Right. And you probably really won't know much about the annual appeal really until, you know, January 1st, because it's gonna trickle, 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 you know, so many people by habit, or some, some actually have tax reasons to do it. Although these days they've seemed to have somewhat evaporated. You know, our next meeting will be fine to figure out.
Yeah, I don't really have, you know, where the last Suppsan is wasn't this week, next week, and then it will shut down until April.
And Suppsan is still happening as a, are, are people, people are not in the building, correct?
No, no, it's to go.
It's still to go, right?
Yep, it's still to go. And next week will be the last one until we start up again in April, which will give us hopefully some time to, you know, with Jen's guidance and whatever else is going on, whether we continue as it to go, or we end up coming back in or whatever it is. So, you know, but we won't know that for a while. So those couple, few months off kind of gives us a chance to regroup a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's probably good that you've kind of decided to take the break. I think the timing is probably wise. I mean, we'll see, but I have to assume that the next six weeks or so might be, you know, might accelerate some of the things we've seen in the last couple of weeks as regards COVID.
Yeah. So that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna hang in there until April.
Yep.
And then, you know, decide what we're gonna do from that point on.
Yep. Okay, that's good. A question, and it kind of gets into the old business side of things. Did you do, at one point, I think you guys had mentioned perhaps putting a flyer in with the poinsettias for Amazon smiles?
I don't think that happened.
Okay.
You know, I wasn't really involved much because of my knee here, but I don't think they, I don't think a flyer went out that I was aware of. Sharon, was there a flyer?
No, there wasn't.
Right. Well, maybe, you know, maybe in the next newsletter, we can underscore to think there was something in the last one, but maybe we can make it a little bit more bold. And maybe take people through it a little bit better. Not better, but you know, I, I, I think sometimes people have to be kind of taken by the hand and told step by step what they need to do to, to make something like this work. And that will really only be the people that.
You're going in and out.
Yeah, something wrong with the audio.
You know, when, when I get too many questions asked to me by the computer to do something I want to do, I, I become resistant to it. Right, well, that sounds great. And, you know, you guys always do such a great job with fundraising, and I'm sure the, you know, do you know how many, was there a good response to the poinsettias?
Sharon picked Pam up. Yeah, Pam seemed to think there wasn't quite as many as last year, but then once we picked them up and brought them to the center, it looked pretty close to last year's, but she didn't have any figures yet.
Yeah.
There were quite a few.
Yeah, that's good. It's, you know, I mean, as long as you're, as long as people are engaging, I mean, you know, it, it almost doesn't matter year to year. In some regards, we're not, it's not really a business. You know, when you think about it, but that people are, are continuing to do it. I'm sure there's some new people in it. I'm sure some people dropped off. But, but the main thing is, is that it has continued to happen, and it happens in enough volume where it still makes sense and.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
Certainly seemed like it was enough of a success today.
Yeah.
The number of poinsettias we had.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I mean, you know, like I say, it's not a business. It's not something that we have to get rich on. It's something really that's more getting us in front of people and think about, particularly now, you know, where, where we aren't able to do some of the things that we traditionally do indoors personally. You know, the things that people really love it and miss a great deal, to be able to at least do some of those things that we have done in the past. And even though it's not exactly the same, at the end of the day, it looks the same in your house.
There were a couple of comments, and people were glad to see that things were back a little bit the way they used to be.
Yeah.
Coming in to get the poinsettias.
Yep, yep.
And if you bought, and if you bought the ones from the friends, the plants are gorgeous. I mean, I, I got, someone brought me one that they got at Costco, which is cheaper. I mean, obviously it's cheaper. It's a bigger plant. It's cheaper, but it's not as nice. It really isn't.
These are really super nice.
They're beautiful plants.
Yeah. Well, I, my wife ordered three, and, you know, the one, I took them in when I came home from work, and they're, they are beautiful.
Yeah.
You know, she taught two, two, I don't know whether, I don't know whether you, whether you had big or small, or if you had big, small, and mediums. But this looks pretty big and pretty medium. Medium at worst. I mean, they're, they're actually quite substantial, even though they're shorter.
Yeah, they're, they are, they're beautiful. They are beautiful plants, but, you know, so that it's some fundraising for us, even though we're not doing the festival and, you know, you can't do that kind of thing. At least it's some money's coming in, which is, which is always good.
Yeah, yeah. And again, as I say, you know, the money's great, but I do think in some regards, when you have something like this, and you keep, you're able to keep something going, you're able to sustain it. It's a good statement to make that we're coming up with ways, you know, our volunteers, you guys, friends, everyone, are coming up with ways to try to not let this thing become so unusual, so abnormal, that life just can't go on. And, and whether it's us or the schools, or, you know, any of the other churches, any other institutions around here, it's, at a time like this, it's important to be able to do these kinds of things. So I think it's great. And, you know, success shouldn't be really measured in, purely in dollars and cents, you know. It should be measured in impact, and I think this is very impactful. You know, just like a lot of the other stuff that we're doing. You know, whether it's online, you know, whether it's, whether it's via Zoom, or you're physically in a room, you know, we're still able to offer a variety of programming and so forth that, you know, keeps us relevant. And, you know, shows that, that as a, as an institution, we're able, we're adaptable and able to be successful in that environment. You know, so it's not just numbers. A lot of it is maintaining sort of a position and a presence. So I think it's, I think that those, you know, plants are great, but so is, is, you know, a lot of the other things that, that we've succeeded at being able to do and, you know, and have reasons to continue to have these meetings for planning, you know, for when it gets better, or, you know, planning for how we respond if it doesn't.
And Jen has a lot of enthusiasm, which is nice.
Yeah. So I guess we need to, why don't we go on to new business? I, I just think that Jen's report, although it might have some impact on some of these things, it won't have impact on others. You know, our meeting calendar is kind of what it is. You know, I didn't really check this for things like holidays, but holidays typically don't kind of fall on Thursdays. And none of these dates stick out to me as being, as being dates to be concerned with.
I checked that there is no conflict with the holidays.
Great, thank you.
I did that.
And does anyone have any comments on the calendar? Again, it's our usual 10-month calendar where we will not meet July and August. And, you know, of course, unless there's some need for an emergency meeting. But, you know, it looks, looks great to me. That's my only comment. Anyone else? Okay.
Well, I may not be at the October meeting because that's my birthday, so.
Oh.
I think we're supposed to spank that day.
Oh, okay.
Kidding. Well, we'll, then we'll.
But I'll let you.
We'll be sure to talk, to talk, to talk kindly of you.
Oh, thank you. But I may, I may show up, so you never know.
Yeah, yeah. We'll see. We'll pass all those things you're, you're dead set against while you're gone if we have.
That sounds like a plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. A plot. It's actually a plot. It's not a plan.
Would somebody like to make a motion to accept the 2022 meeting schedule?
I'll make a motion to accept the schedule. I second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. Wonderful. Thank you.
I will get it filed. Perfect.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
You know, Julie, Julie said, asked me if I wanted to have this next piece on the agenda, which I thought, first of all, it would be awfully assumption, assumption of me to, a great assumption on my part, to just put my name out there and not have an election. It would, it would smack of, it would smack of contemporary politics. But I think, I think, I think regardless of what the vote count is, I think that we should, we should certainly always discuss this thing and not just, you know, rubber stamp it, although it's felt as though you guys have rubber stamped it for the last five or six years. And I'm not sure if this is a running joke on your part.
Well, you don't have to per your bylaws elect a chair every year. You can, you only have to elect as, as needed. So if you want to continue to do it yearly, you're welcome to.
We don't have to, then we don't have to either.
It's Bill.
Let me, let me make it easy if, if it makes it easy. I'm happy to continue to be the chairman, the chairperson. I love working with you guys. It's always, I mean, I know I don't get to the, get to the place very often, but you guys are very vested in, in, you know, in some regards, maybe, maybe my, my role of maybe not being in the thick of it is sometimes good. But, you know, I'm certainly willing to continue to be the sort of head referee here if you guys are happy to have me continue. And I'm happy to, to cede it to anyone who wishes to do it, too.
Well, we could nominate Ken since he's not here, but.
We could, we could, and we could probably win it 4-0.
But I, I nominate you, Bill, to remain as our chairperson.
I agree.
Standing job.
I agree.
Thank you. And I love working with you guys. So, so, you know, maybe next year, we'll, I'll, I can't imagine coming to the end of my rope on it. It's probably, you know, one of the easiest and more rewarding positions in town government here, really, because, you know, it's a very good organization that kind of runs itself in so many, so many, many ways. So, so I'm happy to, I'm happy to take the easiest job in town, if you'll have me to do.
Happy to have you.
All right. So I don't think we have to do anything. We've decided we'll just kind of let this thing keep rolling. The next, the next topic, and I asked to have this added. I'm not sure if there's been any movement on this in town, because I know that there has been some recent concerns, you know, relative to the overall numbers as, as they are. But of course, as we know, in Roxbury, one or two people can get our numbers through the roof. But, you know, I, I have to say, when, when I was at the event for Linda, and I think, I think I mentioned it to Tori, but when we were at the event for Linda, I was ki, I kind of felt uncomfortable with everyone not wearing masks inside and really not following any social distancing guidelines. And, and that was consistent, I think, to the way things have been, you know, up until middle of November, you know, sometime a few weeks ago. But I do think that we as a board should at least discuss what, what we think should be done as we go into these, these next couple of months. As we've seen in the last two years, large holiday seasons, depending on where you are in the country, tend to create not necessarily good results. You know, I'm sure all of us were with relatives over Thanksgiving. My daughter, who was not with us, thank goodness, was at a party of 25 people, and three or four people came down, were tested for COVID two days later.
Really?
And everybody was locked up for a week until they could test out of it. I've, I've heard of some other issues like that, that, you know, the issue with my daughter is not what motivated me to put it on the, on the menu for the day. It actually, I had asked for it to be on the menu, or talked about it being on the menu before, before I'd even heard of that. But, you know, we're now, Roxbury's in a red zone. Everybody around us, except for Washington's in the red zone. The state's up to over 5% after being 1% two and a half months ago. And, and, you know, it's, seems the Northeast, you know, the South gets hit in the summertime when they're all going inside to be in air conditioning, and we're getting hit in the winter. We're gonna get hit in the wintertime, or have been hit in the wintertime when we're all inside. So, you know, again, I don't know. Jimmy, has there been any talk in Town Hall about how you guys are going forward? Or, you know, in terms of masking or anything like that?
Well, I got two things. First, I just talked to Jen. She was having computer issues. She should be on in a minute or two.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Great.
And then as far as COVID, the last, one of the last things Barbara did is we, we kind of rolled back the mask mandates at Town Hall in the senior center. The, we ask people to wear them, but it's not, the signs don't say required. But that was before this new ones come up. I don't know if Patrick, Patrick will talk to the Board of Health in Newtown and kind of rely, relay, rely on them to, you know, if we should go back to mandating masks and that kind of stuff. I don't think we've gotten enough information from Newtown or from the state yet.
Right, right. Well, good. So at least, you know, things, things are moving and people are thinking about it. That's, that's, I think, is a, in the first place, a positive thing, rather than, you know, better, better that we're, that we're ahead of it and thinking about it than we're behind. And that's part of the reason I wanted to talk about it.
No, it's definitely a, something we're very aware of and looking at every day.
Yeah. And, and, you know, my personal opinion, and I really want everybody else to weigh in here. But my personal opinion on it is that, you know, it's, it's overall, it's gonna be, anything that happens is gonna have a certain amount of difficulty in policing. But, you know, when we opened up in, in June, you know, four or five months ago, you know, we had a set of protocols. Got better, and, and, you know, we, we left that, those protocols, and I certainly don't have any, did not have any problem with any of that. But I personally think we're probably looking, it, we made those decisions in, in April. And in April, people were very heady with the fact that the vaccine had come out. People were getting the vaccine here in Connecticut, certainly. You know, numbers were going down and so forth. Now we're, we're in November, you know, and we were gonna be outside. We were able to be outside. And things, things were felt to be an improvement just because of that fact. Now we're in a situation where we're going back inside. The reverse is happening in terms of numbers. Talk of the importance of the booster, and the booster has been sort of slow in the uptake, although maybe in this next, in the last week, it's kind of gone up because of this, this new variant. I don't even, I'm not even talking about the variant in terms of my idea. But, but I think a lot of things are pointing in the wrong direction. We have the most vulnerable population in town. By far more, more, more vulnerable than the collection of people that go into Town Hall by a lot. So, so I do think we need to consider perhaps going back to what we initially asked to do in June, which was ask everyone to, who comes in the senior center, to wear a mask. Exercise classes, people working as volunteers, you know, not putting Jen in the front of things where she has to ask people for what their, what their status is or anything like that. Just, you know, a mask is, you know, they wear them in hospitals for reasons. And long before COVID came, they were wearing them to, to, you know, diminish the, the germs that, that come from respiratory origins. So, you know, I think I would like us to, to discuss that in depth and determine if we wish to re-impose that part of things. In other words, take the sign down that says if you're not vaccinated, you know, if you are vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. I think everybody has to wear a mask right now, because even if you're vaccinated, you can be, you know, and even if you've gotten a booster, you could be passing it along, depending on who sat on your lap on Sunday. So I kind of opened the floor to that conversation. And Jen, I, we had just gone through the new business and landed on the, what I had asked to be added as COVID 2122, and I really think my reasoning was COVID 2122, just meaning how are we gonna get through the next couple of months?
Right, right. I am, I did put, sent an email to Donna, who is, you know, of course, with Newtown District of Health, and that's who we're under. And I was asking her several questions, one of them being, what is her stance on people eating indoors? And if so, do they need to be vaccinated? Or can non-vaccinated come and what have you? She answered every single one of my questions but that one. And I think that's a sticking point for senior centers now, that nobody knows where the buck stops, right? And nobody wants to be the one to say, you know, sure, let people come in and eat, and then all of a sudden you have an outbreak. Right? That's related to your center. I cert, I know that Woodbury in December, I mean, January is going to bring back indoor dining for the time being. And also they're having a Christmas celebration for 50 people, 50 people. Other senior centers around us are already eating indoors. Oxford is eating indoors, but they're the wild, wild west. So they do what they do.
Didn't Bridgewater, Jen, at the Veterans Celebration?
Yes.
The Bridgewater Senior Center had a Veterans Celebration with like 50 people or whatever there. And somebody called the next day and said they were positive.
Yeah.
And everybody had to be.
Yeah, and it took, it took two days to let everybody know. So in the, that 48 hours, the people who were exposed were then, of course, living their lives and possibly exposing other people. So that, that's, that's the, you know, the crunch of it, just like Omicron now. The gentleman from, you know, away came to New York for a business conference, went home. He's got Omicron, so he's exposed now, whoever it is that he was in this business meeting with in, in New York City. So that's how it spread, and it's that easy, and this is very easily transmittable. It does look like if you've had your vaccine and had your boosters, just like all the others, there's a very good chance that you'll stay out of the hospital, which is, you know, exactly what you want. However, I do worry for people who are coming into the center who have not been vaccinated, that if we, if we have it, and we've been vaccinated, and maybe we don't even know that we have it, to spread it to somebody who's unvaccinated, and that can be a potentially lethal situation. So, and nobody wants that on their record, you know. That's, that's, that's the big thing, is that nobody wants to be the one responsible for having an indoor event which gets somebody sick, you know. So that's why I think there is like no answer to that question, you know. Nobody wants to be the buck, you know, where it stops. So in light of that, I was going to reach out to Patrick and see what his idea was or what his thoughts were, you know, because certainly I want to be on the same page as Town Hall. So if you wear a mask in Town Hall, then you'll need to wear a mask in the senior center. So there needs to be continuity, you know. But also, you know, I want to be able to have people come in and share time together, and I know that that's important. But at the same time, I want to be as responsible as possible, and I want to do my due diligence. So I would, you know, if that means that we wear masks indoors, or that, you know, or that we limit a social gathering to those who've been vaccinated, you know, you know, I'm, I'm open to suggestion, really. And I want to err on the side of caution, you know. I don't want to be the one center that gets.
Right, that's right. And, and we should be erring on the side of caution, because in many regards, if we're not erring on the side of caution, we could later be assumed we were not in cautious, but cavalier.
Right now.
And that won't, and that won't help us in any way, any of us, in any way, shape, or form.
No.
Has a medical background. I'd like to hear what her, what her thoughts are.
Who, me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, right now, if you're not vaccinated, you can't go on the trips. So it's, to me, it makes sense that if it's gonna be changed at all, and keep it that, if you're vaccinated, you can go in the center, you can do exercises, you can do everything. And right now, without a mask or a mask, it's your choice. And if you're not vaccinated, then you can't go into the center or take the classes.
I worry about the implication for us looking like we're punishing people for not vaccinating.
Right.
That's my concern, that, at, in an administrative standpoint, that's my. Concern that, at, at, in an administrative standpoint, that's my concern.
Right. I mean, I, I agree with you on that because I don't think, A, you should be a policeman. And B, um, I think it's a bit of, it's a bit of a hot button issue as well.
They have the choice to not go in or to go in and wear, with a mask.
And I think you have a, you know, you have a duty in your position to, um, yes, be concerned about the rights of the people who don't want to be vaccinated. But you also have a duty to provide a safe place for all of the other people who have chosen to be vaccinated and don't want to be around someone who's unvaccinated if they don't have a mask on. So I understand the position you're in. However, you know, I, and we don't know how long this is going to last because they don't know enough about it yet. This might be something that we find out that once we're vaccinated and boosted, that we really do pretty well and it's not as bad as they may think it is right now. You know, or the other way around, that it's a lot worse than they think it is right now.
But, but the numbers that, that I was citing earlier have nothing to do with Omicron. It says, I don't think Omicron is part of our conversation right now. I mean, it will be. It, it absolutely will be.
In the next two weeks, it's, it's.
Yeah, no, it could, it very well could be. But the same, but the same series of issues are surrounding the current variant that we're dealing with, which is it's rising, there's more hospitalizations. Yes, ninety percent of the people that are hospitalized are people that have chosen not to take a vaccine. But some people are, you know, uh, are, are, are getting breakthrough, um, uh, infections. Some people's boosters have fallen off and they know that they're less effective after, you know, six to eight months, depending on what kind of shot you got initially. And last I'd read now, of course, Omicron could have really gotten people to run out and get their boosters. But it was less than twenty percent of the population nationally had gotten boosters. So, so I, I mean, regardless of Omicron, I think we're, we're, we're still, you know, um, uh, you know, we, we, we could still see in a, a serious outbreak.
To me, it's pretty much like the flu and the flu shot. Every year there's a flu shot and they say, oh, it's not the same, uh, of bacteria or virus that was in the last flu shot. So every year it's a little bit different, but we still get a flu shot. And you, you just go on from there. And I think the COVID is gonna be the same thing. Every year we'll get a COVID booster. Now and next year, there may be different variants coming up like there is right now. But I don't think you can change the rules and the, the precautions every month because there may be another variant.
Right, right. But, you know, what we have seen though, you know, there, there's a couple of things. One is, yes, we've been dealing with the flu shot for a while. Luckily, about fifty years ago, we came up with a vaccine, which did not exist in nineteen eighteen when influenza, the flu, hit the world. And it was, it's been under much more control since, you know, they've been able to have the technology to figure out vaccines and how they work. And, you know, in some regards, we're very lucky in this current circumstance because vaccine, you know, the, the idea of vaccination has been long established in the, in the medical community as a device to, you know, give you some, some protection before you get hit. It's not perfect, but it, it gives you something. But you're right. Like the flu, we're gonna be dealing with COVID in some way, shape or form for the next hundred years. But it won't always be like this.
What the concern, what the concern, I mean, for me is now that yes, every day the numbers are going higher. This is the highest they've been since what, January or something, whatever? So do we, right now, while we're in the midst of this, in the winter, everybody's inside kind of thing, and it's just naturally blossoming? Do you err on the side of caution and say, okay, let's go back to wearing a mask inside? You know, until spring gets here and the numbers go down or whatever. Um, you know, that's a call you guys have to make, you and Jen, you and Patrick, and, you know, however you decide to do it. But, you know, that, that's a call and people who are concerned about that could always wear a mask. I mean, just because you don't have to wear a mask at exercise class doesn't mean you can't if you feel more comfortable wearing one.
Right. And everybody at exercise classes was so glad to get rid of the mask. And I mean, every person but if they want to wear it, then they can.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think that's, I think, I think you've either gotta, you've either gotta try to make everybody do the same thing or you don't do anything. I'm, and I'm not for not doing anything. You know, remember when we opened up in June, we had, had made a couple of conditions. One of the conditions was everybody had to wear a mask. Wearing a mask is not that difficult. People make it seem like it's difficult. People make it seem like it's horrible. It's, it's not terrible. You can exercise with it. Sure, it's a little harder to breathe. It's a, but, but, but the alternative is possibly to have somebody in a pretty who could be in a very, uh, you know, um, uh, compromised position and not even know it to get it. I'm not saying we do this for the rest of the year, but I, I think as a board, it would probably be to our credit to at least go back and say, let's go back to the new opening of protocols, which was ask people to clean their hands when they come in, ask people to, you know, fill out something that says, I feel fine today. I don't have a fever. I'm not coughing. Or however we want to manage it, but that was what we had asked for then. And wear a mask inside.
If, if we do get this system, um, up and running, um, when people come in, right when they come in and they touch the screen and they log in, it says, by, by clicking okay, I'm agreeing to the fact that one, I am asymptomatic today, da, 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 da. And that's, and that's really our waiver. That's, that, that, that takes the onus off of the center and puts it onto the person that's attending in attendance. You know, and, and by clicking okay, you agree that you are not, you're not having any symptoms. And, and I think that takes the, that takes the burden off of, you know, off of us and puts it onto the participant.
But, but right, right. But we don't have that technology at the moment, although I think that's one of the things we want to talk about. And I don't know if you're gonna have that, you know, system, even if we all agree and say that'd be great, you'd have it up tomorrow. Right? I mean, there's gonna be some lag, most likely. Days or weeks, one or the other. Hopefully not months. But, but in this case, days or weeks might make a, a big difference. Because a big difference is, is one, is, is one or two cases for us.
That's right.
We're so, we're so small, one or two cases becomes a big deal.
Well, and also we have people from other towns coming in. You know, like, and, and, you know, we don't want, we don't want them to take it back with them. Well, I got this at the seniors, Roxbury Senior Center.
And we don't want them bringing it in. I mean, no, we don't want anybody to get it. We don't want anyone to get it during our watch. And short of, you know, all the other things that we're talking about, there's, there's, there's really only one thing that seems consistently to be a thing that knocks it down when you don't have a vaccination or if you've, you've run out of, you've run out of luck with your, with, with, if you are vaccinated, you know, if it's, if it's run its course and is only protecting you at forty percent or something like that, is a mask. That's it. That's the only choice, that's the only choice that we're given by the, the medical world at this moment, consistently across the board. Wearing a mask, being vaccinated, secondarily, social distancing. But, you know, even that is questionable in terms of if, if you've got a room full of people that are coughing. Which I would hope we wouldn't. But, you know, I, um, you know, I think, I think everybody's stepping around and tiptoeing around the idea of masking, but it, you know, it's the thing that is simplest and works and, and probably would, if we were to say you got a comedian with a mask on, it would take a lot of the onus of responsibility off of us if something would arrive. We will have done everything that they've, that, that the medical professional world has recommended we do. Given what is available at this moment. Short of offering boosters at the senior center.
Which we've done.
Pardon?
Which we've done a couple of times.
No, no, I don't think we, have we done boosters? I thought we've only done flu and.
Yeah, yeah, they did. I had my booster at the, at the Roxbury Senior Center.
Oh, great.
But I know that they're doing them in, in Newtown. And that's where Jerrilyn refers all of the, the people in Roxbury. So I don't know how many, I think of the, the majority of the people, when I speak to them, they've had their, you know, booster and, and, you know, and feel very confident, um, being in each other's company without a mask. And, uh, and I understand that too. You know, it's, it's kind of a move forward. And I, and I think that every time that we tell people to put a mask on, it's, it's almost like, you know, um, almost like they feel like we're, we're moving backward into something that we don't, where we don't want to go. And, uh, so I mean, I understand how people feel, but I under, also understand the, uh, the, uh, medical implications of, uh, of unmasking. So you know, I, I, I would, I would really like to see, how, uh, Patrick feels as well. I think this is, you know, something I'd like him to, to weigh in on as well. Um, I don't want it to be that, you know, the senior center has to wear a mask, but when we go into Town Hall, we don't have to wear a mask. You know, I, I, I really would like to be very on the same page, um, with, with Town Hall. I would like to get input, um, also.
No, I think you certainly should. And I think anything we should, that we would talk about would be more advisory at this moment because we've already got it in place. Like we, we would need to take a, a new vote to, we voted on the first one, then the town chose to change. You know, we never voted on, on masking. You know, our, our recommendation was to mask and that was the last thing we talked about in May or whatever it was. But I, but I do think that, um, if if we are, I, you know, again, I agree with you about Patrick having the final word. He is the, the chief executive of the town. But I also think there's a big difference between Town Hall, the schools, these, and other institutions in town, because the other institutions in town don't service the most compromised population that this particular disease affects in a, in the most, you know, um, dramatic way. Now that may change, that may change. You know, when, when, in, in a few months, when they start averaging things out in a different way. But in the beginning of COVID, you know, the death rates are, are way, 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 way ahead in the sixty and above cohort to every, to all the cohorts put together. And, and even if you survive it, you may be permanently, um, compromised just for what has to happen to get you to survive it. So, you know, that, that's, that's my major concern is not, not the, the big picture, but the very small picture of who we serve.
I agree with that.
I do too. Excuse me, guys. I gotta get up and walk around. My knee's not happy.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm going to just get up and take a little walk and, and I'll be back.
We have to have happy knees.
Gotta have this one happy knee anyway. I'll be back. How do I shut myself up? I don't know how to shut off the picture.
There should be a, something at the bottom that, uh, on the left, it should say stop video. You can either mute or stop video. So if you want us to hear you.
Mute my audio, I can do. I see that.
It doesn't have video. Like on there somewhere?
In the upper right corner.
Upper right corner. Swap share screen with video.
You want to stop.
Or left, I have a mute. I have a microphone that I can mute. All right, I'm gonna mute me.
You can just push the cover down if you want to. That always works.
Put the newspaper in front of me. So, you know, I, I mean, we're, we're kind of in an impasse. Uh, I, I wouldn't even use the word impasse. I think we just, you know, all have some different ideas. Jen, I understand your position of, you know, you, you, you are a, uh, member of, of, you know, the towns, um, you know, for lack of a better word, workforce. You take your orders from others. We're an advisory, uh, operation. Anything, anything we say or do is really, it's not like we can shut the place down without somebody else saying, okay, you're right, or, okay, or, or no, you're wrong. But, you know, I think, um, we don't have to do a formal vote. I don't know if we, if it's legitimate to poll, people, but I guess when I'm above everything else, I'm saying, we've already got things in place that have never been undone that, um, basically say what I'm suggesting. And I don't know if my colleagues, uh, on the board agree with me or not, because we, you know.
Well, we are an advisory board, but we have never, um, been called to vote or really give our opinion and then vote on anything.
That, that's actually inaccurate. Um, Barbara asked us to come up with the, uh, protocols by which we would reopen, uh, when we reopened in June, in May and June. So we were asked to, to set that, set that.
We were asked, but we didn't vote.
Oh, we did. We did. It's in the May sixth minutes. Yeah, we had a motion to formally reopen the senior center. Uh, second motion was, uh, made that all visitors to the Roxbury Senior Center wear a mask at all times and socially distance. Upon entrance, they must provide documentation through a COVID nineteen questionnaire to their current health conditions. Programming held within the Roxbury Senior Center will be held for four to eight attendees maximum, uh, at the discretion of the senior center. And all attendees are required to pre-register. Any off-site trips organized by the senior center, such as movie or cultural events, where participants are using, uh, a method of convey, a public method of conveyance, such as a bus, participants must prove, provide proof of COVID nineteen vaccination and be two weeks post, uh, post that vaccination. And finally, a motion was made that all staff employed and volunteer instructors, volunteers and food handlers working inside of their senior center must show proof of completed vaccine protocol. So we voted on all those things and they passed unanimously.
We voted on it in the town.
We voted on them at our, at our May sixth meeting and it's in the minutes from that day, uh, which are at, which are on the town website. They're, they're formal, they're formal governmental documents, technically.
Were those ideas given to the town?
Sure, they were submitted to the town. The town asked us to do it.
It just sounded like a lot that I, I personally was not like I had ever heard of. But that's, I guess. It's just a little more involved than what I remembered. Yeah, okay. Well, I stand corrected. Then we did vote.
Yeah, but, but remember, you know, when we did that, um, we had been closed for a while. Vaccines didn't really start hitting until March. Um, vaccines didn't really start hitting until March. Um, you know, we were at a, a point in change and, and, um, you know, things were going pretty good. And, and, you know, the May, the vote we did on May sixth was, um, you know, was technically not carried out until June first. You know, so, I mean, but it, but it was, you know, how do we reopen? And could we give the town some guidance? And that's what we gave. And then, you know, probably sometime in July, and things were going good, and we're at a one percent, uh, you know, rate of infection in the state, we loosened it up further. And, and that's fine. That's great. We should loosen it up when things are, are going well. Conversely, we should be willing to tighten it up when things aren't going well. We can't just say, oh, well, what we did in June works now, because it may not. And there's no, there's no guaranteeing any of this. I mean, we could tell everybody to wear masks, and next Thursday, we could have twenty cases in the place. Or, we don't tell anybody to wear masks. We don't ask people to wear masks. We continue to do what we're doing, and we could have twenty cases in the place. It won't matter. But we'll at least be able to say, well, we did what we thought was most prudent, rather than we did nothing.
Right.
So, do you think that, um, moving forward with a mask mandate, um, while we are in a red zone? Uh, what, what would be, what would be the basis for a mask mandate? Would it be, um, you know, when the town is in a, in the red, or when, uh, a certain percentage with the state, um?
I would, I would say we should do what we did before, which was we gave our opinion, in this case, our opinion, and we, we certainly could vote on this, that we go back to the June first document. And like happened last time, the first selectman will determine when we undo that.
Okay.
Yeah, because it was Barbara's decision.
Right.
When we were to open up.
Right. And it was also Barbara's decision to change the terms of it based on, you know, the conditions on the ground. But the conditions on the ground have changed. So for us not to at least question that change is kind of cavalier.
Well, it's being irresponsible if we don't.
Well, it's irresponsible if somebody gets sick. It's cavalier until somebody gets hurt. We're careless until somebody gets hurt. Then we're responsible if somebody gets hurt.
There's that word, yeah. What do you, then what is your thought process on, um, having any kind of, um, gathering indoors besides, I mean, we're gonna have health, you know, and fitness class, um, would you extend, um, that maybe we can have, uh?
Have we, have, I thought we weren't serving food. Have, have we started serving? I know, I know we did for Linda's event.
Oh, no. We, as the senior center, have not sponsored an indoor, um, eating event.
So.
You know, o- others are, um, uh, but that's them. That's not us. You know, certainly, you know, just because, you know, I think of, you know, my grandmother, if so-and-so jumps off a bridge, are you gonna? Um, but, you know, um, you know, I, I do know that people do gain, um, a lot from, uh, that social aspect of eating together and sharing a meal together, you know? That's why Christmas is so great. That's why Thanksgiving is so great, you know? Um, so if, if we did host something as the senior center, um, uh, where would, where would the board stand on that? And I'd be interested to hear what you guys would think about, like maybe limiting it um, to vaccinated status and to, like, keep the number low. Like having, having a luncheon for twenty-five people, or twenty people.
How many people were at Linda's event the other day?
A lot more than twenty.
Well, that, that's, and I think I expressed it to you at the time. Um, that's what sort of got me thinking about this. Because as I said, nobody was social distancing and so forth. We, we, you know, we have avoided doing indoor food stuff. I mean, yeah, it's great. It's wonderful for people to be able to share food together, and it's, 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 it's great. Um, but we haven't done it in a long time because we were concerned. Uh, we probably could have done it outside at Lee at the very worst during the summer or with the windows open or something, but, but, you know, that's not really our high season. Again, I think, I think right now, we've got to be cautious.
I can't imagine why we would go inside now in the winter with the numbers going up and our percentages in Connecticut going up. Why would we consider going inside with fifteen people now? I, I.
Can't eat with a mask on.
We can't eat with a mask on. No, and I can't imagine why we would open that up now.
I think for a lot of people, and, and, and I, you know, I am just speaking for maybe others who have voiced this to me. Um, we go home or, or for Thanksgiving, how many people did we all have at our house?
Yeah.
It, it, it's the same concept. You're just not related to these people.
Right.
You know, but you do share a kinship and you do share a relationship.
Absolutely. I totally agree with that.
You know, breaking bread is, is, um, is a place for you to talk about your grandkids, is a place for you to talk about that maybe you don't talk about in an exercise class.
No, I totally get that. I totally agree with you on that.
Yeah, I mean.
The mental health piece of that is great. I mean, I think it's a great thing, you know, for all of our mental health, you know, to be around other people and to, I just don't know why we would make this, which to me is a big change. Now eating inside with ten, fifteen, twenty people, whatever the number is, why would we make that change now? When the, nothing tells me, tells me personally, that now is the time to make that change. The numbers are low. We're opening up windows. We can go out on the patio, da-da-da-da, you know? To me, if we're ever going to be cautious, to me, now would be the time to be cautious. And then, you know, a month from now, maybe things will be, you know, we'll find out this new virus and the Delta and all that is, is much better, and, and we can do something in January, February. You know?
Yet there are, yet there are other, or I guess practically all the other senior centers are having indoor Christmas celebrations now. They're having the fairs. They're having Victorian teas and.
Yeah, I, well, you know, and again, that might, just in my, just for me, I probably wouldn't go, me personally. And are they gonna kick themselves in the butt two weeks from now, three weeks from now? If the numbers keep going up and they say, oh my God, we had, you know, we had a festival or whatever, and we had a hundred people in here, and now we've got to call a hundred people because three people had COVID. You know?
You know, we're, we are. Go, and we, we, you know, you're gonna be on the bus, you're gonna go, you're gonna eat out together. Um, what's the difference between eating out at a restaurant and eating in the center? The sponsor, perhaps?
Yeah, well, well, you know, when you're eating out in a, in a public place, you choose to go eat in that public place like you would at our place. Right? But, you know, I, I'm, I'm thinking back to your comment about the Thanksgiving event. Um, if in the Thanksgiving event, seven or eight people come into my home, I'm, I'm just gonna use my place. Uh, two of them were over the age of sixty. Uh, everybody else was under the age of forty. Um, if, if there, if a couple of people, one person, two people, whatever, come down or, or we realize had COVID or something like that, that's my house.
Mm-hmm.
It's not this organization.
Correct.
It's a different thing completely. Nobody has, people can criticize, people could say whatever, but it's private. This is public.
Yeah.
And, and we, we have a responsibility to be a little bit more careful than my bozo family might be. No, I mean it. You know, we, we have that responsibility. That, that other places choo- are choosing at this point, you know, we'll, we'll put it this way. Other people put something on a schedule two months ago and are choosing to go through with it. That's different. That's like, you know, damn the torpedoes. Well, it's great if the torpedoes don't hit you.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, every, you know, it's all fun and games until, you know, somebody gets an eye poke done.
It's not, yes.
Well, I think Jen needs to, um, visit with Patrick about this and be on the same page as the town.
But I think she could also go back and let them know what the board thinks too.
Yes, I, that's, I'll do. That's, that's what I'll do. I'll discuss this conversation.
Yeah.
Let, let's, for the sake of simplicity, do this. Um, I've not, I don't want to take a vote, because again, I don't want to bind this, and I frankly think we've already taken a vote. And, and I'm gonna stand by what we did in May because nobody, we never, we never formally rescinded anything, but, you know, we, when we took the vote, it was at the request of the, uh, first selectman. And, you know, I'm happy to put it in, you know, back in that, um, positions, um, lap, for lack of a better word. But I, for one, and, and I'm gonna ask each of us, um, I, I, for one, think we should take a step back and go to the guidance that we set forth, uh, that is laid out in the May sixth minutes of the meetings. Patrick can read them. You know what I mean? It's like he'll, he'll see that we voted and so forth. Um, but I would recommend for a period of time, that will be deter- you know, somebody has to determine it. In this case, it'll be Patrick. I'm not gonna say, oh, we gotta wait until two weeks after New Year's Day, you know, because that'll be two weeks after what I perceive is gonna be where the numbers might start falling. I'm not, I'm not a scientist. Um, but, but I do think, I, what, what I do think I am is a bit of a historian, and history, the recent history of this, um, pandemic has shown at least three or four different times that there's a correlation between upticks in, um, in, in transmission of the virus and large holiday, you, you know, holiday celebrations, uh, that have occurred, be it Fourth of July, New, you know, Memorial Day, you know, the summer ones and the winter ones. And we, we're, we're a week after the winter, the first winter one. And I'd be willing to bet dollars to donuts that Connecticut will be over six percent in a week.
It's over six percent today.
There we go. No, there were five, it was five-two-seven yesterday.
It was six-five today.
I, I amend that, seven percent by next one. Thank, thank you, Virginia. We, I'll, I'll have to do the magic again sometimes. It's like a magic act.
Yeah.
Um, so, so I, for one, would say that. I, I leave you guys to chime up as you wish, and, and basically, um, uh, Jen can serve, this could serve as a poll for Jen of the four of us.
I agree.
I agree too.
I think we should keep things the way they are for now until, uh, we hear from Patrick. And, um, let's see what's gonna happen as far as he goes in the town hall. But I think we should keep it the way it is. Mask, if you're not vaccinated and you come in the center, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask, and you don't have to wear a mask for exercise for now, unless things change in the next month with, as far as Patrick goes.
Great. Great.
And of course, when you're, for me, for me, you're talking to somebody that's in just about every exercise class there is.
Yeah. No, 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 and I, believe me, I understand that this is uncomfortable and it's, um, it makes the exercising harder.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to.
Particularly for people in our, in our group. Um, so, you know, it, it's not like, I think putting masks on is gonna be fun. But I do think it's, um, it's also not a big uh, impediment to being able to do whatever you want anyway.
No, I'm just trying to.
That's me. That's absolutely my opinion. It's.
I'm just trying to convey, convey from what I know from being in the classes, everybody's opinion.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, when I, when I started on the ninth, it was that, um, you had to wear a mask into the center, but when you got to your position, like the, the space that you were exercising and you were able to take it off to exercise, um, would that be something, would that be something that the board would entertain? You know, if you're walking around the center and you're in the center, you need to wear a mask. Once you get to your spot where you're going to exercise, and, and most, uh, people have their own little square that they use to either move back and forward, you know, whatever, lying down on the ground, that's your space. Um, would it be okay if, when they were in their space to exercise, they took it off, and then once they finished, put it on and left the center?
Well, I think you can, I think you can talk to Patrick about that.
Okay.
You know, I mean, we've, we've, I think we've all kind of set our piece. Sure, we can, we could, we could certainly discuss other things, and if we need to have an emergency meeting, we can. Um, I think that was, I think part of why we said no more than eight, you know, four to eight, we set that as a number, and I think we set it because we felt that that would allow people to get that social distancing, that they would re, you know, that would, that would make it work out. And if we, you know, opened up window, you know, we'd have to, we'd have to do some other things, I think, to make it a safer environment. Because, you know, six, six feet social distancing works if you're standing there. But if you're actually exerting yourself, you're breathing harder. It's like yelling, you know, you're, you, you project a lot more of what makes this contagious in that situation. So.
I mean, would that mean that if, that if, like when we were, when we had smaller classes and you didn't wear the masks? The reason, like Bill said, it's just for the spacing. Now that the classes are a little bigger, does that, you know, does that make a difference? Do we need to go back then to the small classes, the smaller classes without the masks?
Certainly, certainly I could map out, you know, um, you know, with tape on the floor to see how many people could fit in the room with giving that kind of space.
Right.
Um, we have, I have moved a lot of furniture out of the upstairs. You know, Sharon can attest to that, and, um, a couple more pieces are coming down, so it, it is a lot more spacious, and we do have that stage. So if, you know, somebody wanted to go up there and utilize that area as well, I mean, that can be definitely part of the, uh, part of it, but I, you know, I, I will do that. I will, um, I'll map out the square according to social distancing, and, and I'll see how many people that we can safely fit.
And again, if you, if you have, if you have two windows open, it makes it a lot better, you know, and people will have to bundle up a little bit. It's the middle of winter. But, but no, I mean, I, I, I think, I, again, I think we should go back, you know, all I'm saying is that I think we should use our original guidance as our guidance. If, you know, that can be, uh, again, it adjusted as the first go-around was adjusted by the first selectman. We've just, as a board, given our, our reason, and not to let us off the hook, but just to put out there that we feel that there's a need to assess and be responsible for what is going on in the building, because that's what, that, in the end of the day, our role is, Jen, is not necessarily to tell you what or what not to do or programming or whatever, you know, we're here to listen. We're here to offer what we can. But the end of the day, our role is to protect the building. Right? And part of the building is the reputation of the building and what goes on in the building, and what liabilities are we exposed to that occur due to the things that happen in the building.
I agree wholeheartedly with that, yeah.
So it's about the build, you know, at the end of the day, we're about the building. We delve into other areas, but really, the, the one thing we were asked to do is take care of the building.
Okay.
Jen, if you need help with the mapping out and with, you know, spacing, I, I can give you a hand with that.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah. I've been there on the floor, off the floor.
And listen, talk to Patrick about it. I mean, you know, I think you have to give Patrick, you know, a, an unvarnished view of what we've discussed.
Absolutely.
And, and you know, again, I, and, and part of my thinking, and I think when we talked about this initially about the, having everybody masked, you don't have to police that. Mask on or mask off? No mask on, go away. Mask on, you can stick around. But then you don't have to be, well, we do this sometimes and we do this other times. And, you know, if you wear the right colored shoes, we'll do this and, you know, we, there, there does, I think, need to be a protocol that's established that um is easy to manage for you because you know, we don't want to have the cops, you know, we don't have five people walking around with batons, making sure people are doing things.
No.
That would not be fun.
I hear they do that at Woodbury. I'm kidding. So, so again, you know, you'll, you'll, I'm sure you'll talk to Patrick tomorrow and, and, you know, know where we stand. Reference that document from the sixth and, you know, and, and let's, let's see, and let's hope, let's hope um we're, we're being overly cautious and uh that we hear nothing uh, you know, bad develops for us uh in our, in our institution. Um, now let's go back to um uh Jen, to your, your report and is, is Jimmy still with us? Is he still, Jimmy, are you there?
He's right for man through this meeting. Yes.
I think he's muted though. We're gonna have to call him.
Getting a lot of work done.
Hey, somebody call town hall. Tell Jimmy he's on.
So um this program that you've heard me brag about 10 million times is one that we've used in Woodbury. And it is um a statistical dynamo. It's an information dynamo and um it will help me to do my job better and more efficiently. And it will help me to procure grants um because it will give me the pad of the I need. And um, and uh I'll be able to chart who comes in, when they come in, why they come in, how long they were here. Um, who their next of contact is, if they fall, it's all right there. If they've been vaccinated, not vaccinated, um, they can do the waiver that says that they feel good coming into the center today. And it takes the onus off of us. Um, if a class has to be canceled for, let's say, weather, I can do a mass contact, mass call right then and there. Um, it's, it really does everything. And the bonus is, is that it will also help on Geraldine to do her job. She can also use it at, on the social services end. So it's, it's ends up being a twofer um, um, which is great, but mostly it's, it's great for me. And um it is not inexpensive. The, it's originally $10,000. However, there's a sponsor based model um through uh CSCP, they give you a discount of $6,370. So it ends up being $4,500. Um, and that includes everything. So that includes the monitor, the um little infrared, the, the little um chips that you use or the little scanner chips that you use, much like you use in the grocery store. That's your ID. You scan it in. Um, it says hello Sharon and you say hello, I'm here to do this, 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 and and, and that's, and you go on your merry way.
Wait, is there a, is there like a fob or something?
There is, there's a little fob and it's like the kind you have at the grocery store when you get your discount.
Right.
Um, same exact thing.
So they'll provide, they'll provide that to you.
Yeah.
When you'll assign that number that's assigned to that fob to the to Sharon, to Sharon. So whenever Sharon comes in, it automatically calls her number XYZ.
Yep.
Whatever it is.
And if Sharon forgets for whatever reason, she can call and say, hey Jen, I forgot to sign in. I can do everything on my end. I schedule programs from that end. I have our list of instructors. I have a list of all of our membership, everything. So um uh it, it also includes the year of service. It comes with IT. Um, they have a, a web-based training seminars um and everything is in the cloud. So um all of that is for $4,500.
Now, is there a year, is there a yearly fee after that?
Fee of $1,200 and it won't be billed until a year after you get it. So it's every year, it's yearly billing. And let's say we get this thing going on uh January 3rd, I won't receive another, the bill for 1,200 until 2023, January 3rd, 2023.
Okay.
And it's, and it's, and it's, it, it is a, a wonderful program.
Now, is that something that's going to be funded through the town budget or is that something you're looking for the friends for or?
Well, um, that would depend. Now, um Jimmy, we have discussed, you know, where that money would come from. Originally I was looking to um use this a, a, a grant for it. Um, however, because you know, the grant is um, is unrestricted, I'd like to save that. And um I know that there's, I think, 113017 for computer need.
I think first off, um the yearly, after we get it, the yearly would, would be put into the senior center budget.
Yes.
And the town, it would just be part of.
It would, it would be part of the senior center budget.
Yes.
It would just increase on that. So.
So it's the initial 4,500 that needs funding.
Right.
Correct. And, and you're saying, you're saying we have $1,130 in that um in that, that money that we use to do, you know, we had purchased um some, I think, some, some internet um accessibility. Maybe we even set up our, you know, we, we've used that periodically whenever we can, that has, and it has to do with technology. Because we've, we've never been able to really spend it.
Co- co- correct. You have $1,130 and 17 cents in restricted for computer technology stuff. So after talking with Jen, oh, sorry Jen.
I'm sorry. And I, you know, I would like the board to release that.
Yeah, we're talking with Kim Barron. You also have some unrestricted funds that Kim thought, you know, keep that, don't tap into that because that will come in handy if.
Sure. Sure. Um, but, but are there, are there any other things in that sort of collection of monies that we have that um that might be able to be helping with this as well?
So, so there's a couple. So first there's the 1,100 that we want to use for the, the restricted.
And that clearly to me seems like that's.
Then you have, and I don't want to speak for Jen, but she can correct me if I'm wrong. Then there is a good chunk of money left in your programs budget for this year. And I think the plan, talking with Kim and Patrick and Jen, the plan is to tap into that funding now so we can pay for this stuff. And then we are going to use the ARPA money, which is the federal money to pay for this. So you'll get reimbursed. We're just going to use your money that's already there to buy this stuff now. So we don't have to wait months for the ARPA money to come in.
Right.
That's, that's the plan.
What is ARPA money? I'm sorry.
ARPA money is part of the federal, you know, the, the
With coronavirus.
Yes.
Yeah, coronavirus.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Um, now, when you say, when you say there is unspent programming money, was that um, is that carried over from programming that did not occur in the uh previous fiscal year?
Yes.
Or is it?
That's your regular budgeting this year. Yeah, because of COVID, I don't think you did, Linda didn't do as many programs.
Right. And she asked that that leftover could be put into the program budget. So that's why I have a, a, um, a good amount of programming money to use.
Okay. So, so the program, you know, it's basically, because our programming money comes from the friends. Uh, for the most part, right?
Yeah.
So, so let's see, we're talking, um, so our fiscal, our fiscal goes with the calendar year, correct?
No, they changed it.
Fiscal is July to June.
Okay, okay. So fiscal year uh, uh, July 20 till June 21st, the last fiscal year had monies left over that the friends had raised that we didn't use and we brought it into this year's programming budget, thus an oversized programming budget at this moment. Is that, is that right?
Yeah. Uh, I, I would say oversized, but I would say a, a decent.
Yeah, yeah. No, but it got a, it got a bump, it got carried over.
Yeah. And, and I would really like to take $3,333.93 from that and um use it towards, towards all of this IT stuff. And then the ARPA money will then be able to be reimbursed. So it, you know, it's.
Yeah, you're, you're kind of going to get made whole. Again, we're just borrowing this because we have the ARPA money has a ton of hoops that we have to jump through and you know, assign correctly.
It is possible to do that, Jimmy. I mean, it is, that is doable.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, Kim, this, this is what this money is kind of for.
Right.
But we don't, then we don't have to wait till.
Caused by coronavirus techniques.
Exactly. We don't have to wait till June to buy all this stuff. We can buy this stuff for Jen now.
Okay. Do we need to vote on this?
Uh, yeah. I think you, you need to vote on the releasing the $1,100 for the, from the, from the tech restricted money and then make a motion to say you're okay with spending money out of the programming budget.
Yeah, to be reimbursed.
Some tech, to, yeah, to finance some tech purchases now.
Um, yeah, and I, and I frankly have to say, you know, we've been, that $1,100 is probably sat still for three years because.
I have it here. It was originally.
We killed ourselves in, for the first couple of years, at least as far as when I was chairman and how to spend it.
Yeah, you haven't spent, we, we haven't spent it since November of 2017. That was the last time.
I think that was when you fooled around.
When we bought the computers and stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, right. Um.
Let's do it. I'm ready to vote.
Yep, yep. Um, so um how should we phrase this, do you think? Um, something along the lines of, uh, because I don't know what these terms are, but our, but our uh restricted can, you know, that the monies uh left in uh our restricted uh technology uh uh budget um can, you know, I, okay, I move that the money yes, from our restricted technology budget should be released for the purchase of this um, uh, this new, what is it called? Um, um, Jen?
It is called the uh My Senior Center.
Uh, for the My Senior Center, uh, uh, the purchase of the My Senior Center program. That sound right?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. So there's a, there's 1,129 bucks right there.
And then I just, just, so you guys are, I think you're on you know, agree with it. Just so you're aware, we will be spending some money out of program.
Okay.
Um, you don't need to give approval for that because it's already in there. But we are going to be doing that to finish off the My Senior Center as well as.
Great.
Yeah.
And ARPA money will make you whole again.
Yeah.
Tell Kim, we'll be watching, we'll be waiting. I'll be calling her in about eight weeks.
Yeah, she'll.
First of March.
She'll have it all.
You'll have to call and join as an official member so you can have your key fob.
Um, yeah, that's great. Also, for membership, um, a- and you know, I don't, I don't think that's an ugly word. I mean, I know we've pushed back on the idea of charging people for it, but I do think for the idea that people are becoming members of the board and we can certainly hold off sometime in the future if we ever wanted to change our mind on charging, but um I do think to get people listed who identify as members of the board would be really good to have, would also be good to have, you know, email addresses and their physical addresses so that our friends can um, you know, sort of do some data uh hygiene on their stuff to make sure they've got all the correct, you know, communications pieces and that they've got everybody on the list that they should be soliciting.
It'll also be a big help for the town because I know Barbara struggled. She has the, the, the call system, the email system, the tech system and, and some of the seniors just don't have, didn't have that technology.
Right.
So this will be a big help in hopefully identifying some of those people so in emergencies.
Yes.
That's great.
And we know so and so doesn't have emails, so they didn't get this.
Right.
We can send.
You know, that kind of stuff. It's, it's, it'll be really um revolutionary.
Yeah.
It's gonna be awesome.
Data is good. There's nothing, you know, bad data is not good, but good data is good. And, and you know, of course, it's got to be, no, no, it's got to be updated, you know, data be very quick. And it suffers because if people don't tell you they've changed their address or they throw out their phone or, you know, whatever it is. Um, they quit their job and they're no longer using their work email address as their personal email address. Um, you'll lose, you'll lose them. Uh, but you know, that, that's a different problem. But having everybody listed at least at one time in one place at least gives you a place to start looking if you need to find them.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Thanks, Jimmy. I appreciate your help.
Thanks. That was a great explanation, Jim. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion about the program money?
Um, no. No, that's not.
That's regular budget.
It's been brought to our attention. We're aware of it. And it's really going to be uh in, in exchange. It's a loan. Essentially, it's a, it's an interest free loan that we're giving to be able to purchase this and the town will reimburse us when they receive their money.
Okay.
Or in advance. It's not a loan.
It's, yeah, it's an advance.
I didn't want to put Jimmy in the spot when I go to, hey, we got one, we're getting one and a half percent on monthly. Uh, God. Uh, okay. Any other business or topics that uh anyone would like to address?
Yes, I do have a survey out there, um, just checking to see where people are in terms of uh programmings, programming and returning to the center. Um, I really um wanted to see where people were uh feeling in terms of COVID. So there was a lot of fear questions, you know, like, are you afraid of how you're perceived? You know, so that I can have an idea of um some things I can fix through education and some things I cannot. So I, I just wanted to gauge where our seniors were. But, but in that, there's a word that uh it's a trigger word for a lot of people and that word is senior. And so it kind of carries this negative connotation that people are old and decrepit and what have you. So that seems to be um a trend throughout. And so um, I saw a woman came in to see me and we were talking and I said, you know, you should come. She's talking about exercises. You should come to our exercise programs. They're not for the faint of heart. And she's like, I can't come to a program like this. I'm only 70. I'm not a senior. Now, I, I think the word senior, people are really uh going away from and what's, and what's um the Groton Senior Center has changed their name legally, changed their name. And it took them two years to jump through hoops because they're still considered a senior center and, you know, all of the grants and everything that they've that they've gotten. Um, you know, they needed to be able to keep that, but they made, they, they were the first ones out there that stated their case that people were not coming in because they didn't want to come to a senior center.
Right. I agree with that.
So in, yeah, and, and it's very real. And I can't tell you how many people I've talked to that are eligible to come in. And I'm telling them all of the things that I'd love to do and they're like, well, that sounds great, but it's a senior center. You know, so I would like us to stay the, the Roxbury Senior Center, but I am, I am going to change the name of our newsletter just to see what that does. And so it's not going to say like the Roxbury Senior Center Newsletter. It's going to say um uh the Center at Seven South. And that's what I'm going to call it. And I'm going to try to take out some of the words that say senior, 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 senior in terms of programming, like call the senior center. I'll just say call the center.
Yeah, well, they changed the name of theirs uh to the Hilltop Center.
Yeah. I just want to see uh, a little experiment to see what that does, to see who looks at that and notices that. Um, because this, this is going to be a hotbed topic. This is going to be what's coming up in the next couple of years is that people are, are really not wanting to be called senior because it, it, it carries negative connotations and, and, and people aren't coming in because. are, are really not wanting to be called senior, because it, it, it carries negative connotations, and, and, and people aren't coming in because of that.
What were you, did, did you, did you confront this at all in Woodbury?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Um, so we started using words like the center, call the center if you want. You know, all of our letterhead and all of that stuff that still said, you know, the Woodbury Senior Center. But, you know, when people would come in, they'd say, oh, my God, I can't believe that you guys do this. You, you guys have yoga? And it's like, yeah, we have yoga. Of course we have yoga. And it's like, well, I didn't think old people did yoga. It's like, this is not a place to drool and catch a buzz. I, you are, you are misinformed, my friend. Here, let me show you all.
My, my only, my only question on the Center at Seven South, is do people know, you know, do people identify it as Seven South? I mean, I know lots of people still call it the Old Town Hall, and I don't, we don't want to use the word old. But, but, um, I mean, you know, let's go for it. If, if you find it, you know, people are getting confused, we can figure out a way to make it more clear to them.
It still says Roxbury Senior Center. It still has everything else for the Senior Center.
Mm-hmm.
But I just thought maybe changing that, uh, I'd like to see where that goes, you know, how people respond to them.
Yeah, give it a try.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great idea, Jen. I do too.
About branding too. It's, you know, you're, you're changing your branding a little bit. I mean, have you been into Wayne's lately? He's doing all kinds of branding. And, and, and that's really kind of where it's going. And I think Groton is now calling themselves, uh, Thrive Fifty-Five.
Sounds like a gymnasium.
I mean, you know, I, I wanted ours to be a little more, you know, huh, you know, but, and, so, um, yeah. But I, I, I'd like to see where that goes. So, uh, the next newsletter is actually going to say the Center at Seven South, and it'll still say, our P O box, or all the other stuff will be the same. I'm going to start taking out the word senior, and I'm just going to put center, call the center.
Right.
And, and, and.
It can't hurt. I mean, that can't hurt. I, I remember telling Linda the story, and you probably heard this when I first walked into the Senior Center, because I was one of those people. I'm not old enough to go to the Senior Center. And then, of course I am. But then Sharon brought me, and I remember walking in, and it didn't look at all like what was in my head of a Senior Center.
Right.
I thought it was going to be the plastic tables with the folding chairs.
Right.
And, you know, that, the plastic tablecloths on it, you know, that kind of thing. That, what was in my head is what it looked like. And when I just walked in, I was like, oh, my God, this looks so different than what I thought it was going to be.
Right.
You know, it looks so much more welcoming.
Yeah. You know, I also think it's not a bad idea to leverage the idea that it is a beautiful historic building.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, and I don't know, I think even in the front of it, it's got like the date, right? I mean, it's got like.
Yeah.
Like built in eighteen seventy-six.
The original sign is upstairs.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. So I mean, you know, I, I mean, I think people, I think people like that kind of stuff. Like you say, you know, Virginia, you know, rather than thinking when they come in, they're going to have a bunch of plastic tables and, you know. And feel it's, it's a unique place.
Yeah.
In and of itself.
The challenge is to get people in. The challenge is to get.
We're going to have, um, an evening program on Mondays. Um, it's going to be, um, a yoga flow, uh, class, and so that's going to be at night. Um, and we're going to have some weekend stuff coming up. We're going to be doing self-defense. For seniors and self-defense for women. Um, we are, it, it's, we're going places. We're going places.
Great.
Ready.
Great. Well, I, I'm sure we will. That, that's all terrific stuff. You know, what, what I found when I was doing my film thing, not only were sometimes the films esoteric, but I do think sometimes at night, people are a little, um, apprehensive about driving, particularly in the winter, when it's as dark as it might be at seven or eight o'clock at night. So we'll just have to see and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that we attract some of those younger seniors, or some of the seniors that still work.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
Um, we had a flood this week in the Senior Center, um. By fire or flood, that's how I like to go. Um, um, we had a stop in the, in the toilet, bathroom, and it, could, made the other toilet run, and, um, it made an alarm go off. And I was on the phone, and I heard this beeping, but I'm, you know, I'm not thinking about that. And I hang up the phone, and immediately I get a phone call from the alarm company, um, that's asking me to acknowledge, acknowledge that we, uh, that I know that there's a ground, something, uh, a ground short. So like, oh, God, okay. So I hit the number one, I grabbed the flashlight, I take three steps out of my office, and I hear,
Oh.
Down like, I run in, I turn off the, um, toilets, I go out to the front, because I hear the beeping, you know, from, at the front of the building. It, it is a ground, uh, short. So I slosh down to the basement that is flooded, flooded. And, um, I call, immediately call Patrick, I call Judy, um, and, yeah. And it has dried out in the basement on the floor. Our extra carpet got doused with water. Um, I did take out seven, um, wet dry vacs loads full of water. Um, but our pad on our, our underpad is still soaked. So I worry about mold and all of that. Patrick's come to take a look, and we might lose that part of the rug. And if we do, um, I am, I'm pricing out now how much it would be to put a different flooring down, um, just in that part of the hallway. And I, and it actually extended out into, um, we're under the buffet. I don't know if you know where the buffet in the front of the Senior Center is. That also was wet. Um, so I was going to take it from where the land, uh, trust used to be. Um, that front door, that front part of the, uh, 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 when you enter, and then down the hall. And to my, where it gets to my office. And, um, take all of that up and put down, um, a waterproof flooring. So I was in Geraldine's office, and I said, hey, you know, what, what was your, what's your floor? And so, uh, she actually gave me a sample. I went in to show Patrick this morning. Um, it is waterproof, it is vinyl, it looks like wood. Um, it's not a flat surface wood. And when you walk on it, it does not sound like that hollow bit. Um, it's really quite good. And so I'm going to be pricing that out to see, um, to see what I can do. Um, I, I know the pad's a total loss. Um, and, and we've, I've had a fan on it for two days now, and it's still soaking wet.
And none, and none of that excess rug is, uh, salvageable, huh?
No, I think we're going to have to throw that out from the basement as well.
Um.
A lot of things down there.
Did, on our capital expenditures, you know, every year, we, we, for a while ago, we, we projected out, um, five years. And this year, you know, I think last year we worked on the roof, this year they did some painting, they painted the building. We should rep, we should take, you should take a look at that. There might, we might have asked for money for a new carpet.
That was two years ago. They just put the carpet in two years ago.
Oh. All right, well.
Yeah, I asked Linda. I, I do have. Pardon?
Is there something with insurance? Don't we have, like, you have homeowner's insurance if that happens?
Insurance, I talked to Patrick about that, and the insurance ha- carries a one thousand dollar deductible, and also, um, uh, it would have to be a catastrophic loss. So it would have to be like the floor was rotted, the sheet rock was rotted. And it isn't. It's, it's really just the, that the, the rug and the underpad are, uh, yeah, just, you know, destroyed. You know, maybe, you know, I don't know, uh, however much it is to repair it, I, I, I'm not sure yet. I will figure that out. I know that I have a repairs budget, um, that has three thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars. Uh, you know, but I really don't want to exhaust that. You know, I'm nervous about, you know, exhausting that, and then something else happens. Um, uh.
So the insurance really doesn't come into play on it.
No, no, it doesn't, unfortunately. Um, I am trying to work out the square footage. I took some measurements tonight. Um, I know that Geraldine's, uh, uh, floor is, I think, two dollars and eighty-four cents a square foot. I, I don't know. That's not installed, that's a product, but, you know, um, uh, I, I'll price it out, and I'll see, um, see where we come up. But, um, and I'll try to find the money somewhere.
Yeah, well, I would have to think that a lot of our expenditures that we've been seeing over the last couple of years, because of COVID, have been down. You know, just, you know, I'm sure, although I, I know oil prices are now skyrocketed. You know, I, I think last year, a lot of our energy costs were way off, and I know that just gets doubled up by the town at the end of the day, any savings. So there might be some place you can move, um, that, that, you know, that can give you some of that. Well, but you're not going to try to match, in other words, you're not going to put another, piece of carpet down that will ill-match the carpet that's still there. You'll just do this wooden thing, and there'll be like a little, a little border that tacks it down, uh, as the transition or something like that. And then it'll just be as though it's a wooden floor entry in a hallways of, you know, the wooden floor, essentially.
Yeah. And, um, we'll still keep the rug in the dining room area. Yeah, yeah, Virginia.
No, Jimmy's waving.
Oh.
Bye.
Bye.
I thought he was trying to dry the rug out.
Which, um, yeah, so it's, it's, yeah, it's, I would really like to put a waterproof flooring down and not a carpet there, just in case something like this were to happen again. Um, I am going to put up a couple of signs. Um, I know that one bathroom has, um, a, a sanitary disposal, but the other one does not. And the one that was clogged is the one that didn't have. So I'll make sure I have something in there. I'll put one up in, in the upstairs bathroom and just put up some signs saying, you know, um, I found very lovely ones on, uh, Amazon, and, we'll, we'll get that figured out, and, and I have budget for that. I'm just nervous about, um, this flooring. And where that money's going to come from, so.
Well, I think we've got to just see what the cost is, and, and also get a sense of what it, what it might ultimately look like, you know what I mean? If, if there's a big drop-off between the depth of the carpet and the wood, it might not look so good or be so good, because it's just one of those, little things that somebody's going to trip on or something.
Guys, excuse me. I gotta go. I can't sit here any longer.
Great.
So are we, am I?
Yes, I think, I think we're, I mean, um, um, Jen, is there anything else that, that we need?
No, that's, that's it. We're good.
Okay.
All right, guys. Thank you.
Great, great. Thanks, thanks, Virginia.
Virginia.
I'm going to try to leave, so.
Good luck.
Thanks. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
And, and Jen, good luck with the, um, well, first, you know, let's get that computer program going on.
Yeah.
And, and, um, and then, you know, we'll tackle that other problem and see what, you know, I mean, it looks so nice. Let's, hopefully we can keep something that'll maintain the general tone of the place.
Yeah. Yeah, it's going to sit right on the buffet. It's, it's really not bigger than a, than a, the computer screen that I have now. It's, 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 yeah, I have to run some electrical, but that's something that can be done, and, yeah.
Yep, okay.
That'd be great.
Great.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. I appreciate you for the time.
Okay, so, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn? Since there's only three of us, and before we lose our quorum. We'll never be able to adjourn.
I second it.
Okay.
Okay, we are adjourned. Uh, thanks, everybody. And, uh.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks again. And, and again, and if Patrick wants to talk to me, I'm, I'm, I'm happy, I'm around, he's got my number. Okay?
Perfect. Excellent. Thanks, Bill. I appreciate it.
Okay, though. Thanks, everybody.
Yeah.
Bye-bye. Good night.